Call this meeting to order. First time on the agendas and enrollment projections.
Craig and I can speak to this as I pull this up. So I'm just gonna pop it up on the screen so you can see it. I'm not gonna scroll through the whole thing. We're working with DeYoung-Richter to do our updated enrollment projections. A reminder that we'll do that once every two years. We're a little early this time, but we want to get that done prior to any discussion and decisions about changes to the facility master plan. So the goal is to have that done, and I'm gonna refer to Craig for the final date on that. I know it's the end of November that they plan on wrapping that up. Adam has been really involved with making sure that they can get some related to reach data. We have to work with the state of Iowa to get live birth data and have it broken down like zip code. He's been very proactive with that, and we think we've got all that data ready to go. So he's instrumental in getting them up to speed so that they can meet the deliverable dates on it. What other questions might you have?
The scope of the final report was designed to mimic what we received from last time so there would be uniformity between the two. And so that's what will be delivered to us, is exactly what we received last.
Except that with different boundaries.
And I assume they'll be future boundaries.
I'd have to go back and look. You mean in terms of the ones that were voted on tonight?
No, the elementary boundaries. You know, I assume they're gonna give us projections for the elementary boundaries that we voted to take effect out of the 2,000.
Yeah, I think Adam uploaded the spring elementary boundaries for them, so they have both.
I was gonna say, would it be useful to get that one in and then we still have 2,000 that we haven't gotten yet?
I think they're bridging the two based on the date of implementation of the new one. So I think they are looking specifically at the new ones when they come into effect and the current ones until they're in effect.
That's great.
So we get the projections as there are now and then as they will be.
You know, I guess I was just thinking, it is possible that we're gonna have to revisit some of those elementary decisions because it's always possible, but also because of specific things that we know, like the possibility that we could open grantage application. It would be useful, it's not too late, to get North Lincoln separately projected, what we currently call South Lincoln separately projected, the Peninsula separately projected. And, you know, trying to think of some other areas. Certainly the Cedar Springs Fox Run and North as a separate projection, which we might need that if we're gonna end up in a slightly different zone up there. I could probably think of some others.
Is that part of the package that we can?
I don't know. We'd have to ask them whether or not they can take that data and give us those numbers. I would presume there's probably gonna be a writer on that based on the contractors that are currently written.
How many of the three that we can already base? Four, I guess. North Lincoln, South Lincoln, Peninsula, and Cedar Springs Fox Run.
When we get that back, are we able to, within our district, be able to pull those areas after we get that feedback? Or is that not?
We actually don't get a dataset when we get to report.
Okay.
Oh, you might also think of that north portion of the Williams Zone that's supposed to become grant.
Like the Scanlon Farms development, but be on that, on both sides of the high school, not both south and north. I don't know if that would fall into another category somewhere else, but since it hasn't been developed at all yet.
Yeah, Craig was just asking, we may be able to, depending on, I think in the way the report's set up, I think we may be able to help with some of that using Guide K-12. Adam's gonna be going through to the admin and come up to speed on that. So that may be something we ask them, too.
I mean, we can always do age progressions. It was nice to get the actual.
They should not do it, right?
Oh, yeah, they can do it. As to what contract or not, should they meet the timeline?
Yeah, because we may have a different scenario a year from now, and if we want to go back and get it for the dataset, it's just a question of.
My contract, so. I would suggest at this date, it would probably be a later report. I don't think they would be able to accomplish that in the amount of time that we have between now and when they're to report out to us. And we can certainly check with them.
Yeah, we're supposed to find out how long to take and what it costs.
But that would be probably my guess, is that they require a fairly large lead, a large lead time to do these kinds of things.
So you lost no one with it? What kind of answer is this? Is that the primary objective? I think it was, wasn't it?
Yeah, I just wanted to see if we could get some smaller blocks.
Could I get an email with all of that information that you're thinking about so that I can communicate it correctly to them?
Sure, yeah.
One of us can remind the other person, because now I've got a mental issue, how am I supposed to send it?
Are you all, all of the data from the increased cost of the loan?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to get a cost first.
We'll get the requests out to them and get that feedback.
Let's get that. Right, first in action. All right, anything else on this one? There you go. All right, next time on the agendas, what's the master plan, community engagement process?
Yep, so we are, we've been working with Thought Exchange, and we'll be rolling out on October 12th through the 24th, the first community engagement phase. And through that one, we're essentially, in broad brushstrokes, we're asking folks what in the community, or what in the facility master plan they like and is working? Where are their challenges and opportunities for us? And then we're also going to be requesting some feedback from them on direct impact that families may have had in areas that have been already processed through the facility master plan. So for instance, if you're a Coroville parent, there's an opportunity to talk about the impact of the changes in the facility master plan, tween, and et cetera. So we're hoping to gather from them some direct feedback from parents and students who've lived through that, and what changes that's made to their learning environment. You'll see that there's two phases where we're gonna ask people to go through and do some prioritization of the feedback that's received. And after working through this with them, we think that putting that second plan in place will just help us refine it a little bit more. One of the things that we anticipate is when we get back to you as a board with the results, that you're going to look at it and say, what does this look like? Now we've looked at the enrollment projections, we've looked at the community feedback, are there things on this list that need to either be moved up or back in timeline? Are there things in individual buildings that the scope needs to be changed based on the input that we've received from them? And so we want to make sure that you've got as much detailed feedback from the community as quickly as possible. So that comes in simultaneously with our DeYoung-Richter feedback. So you can see they're gonna have the final report back to us beginning in December. That'll come in right before our first board meeting in December.
Is there any way to, and maybe it's good to do it yearly now, to update this, when you get to this, on the website so people are going through it and it's updated to what's been done, what's currently in progress and completed since this got on?
Yep, and one thing that I failed to mention, actually, that reminds me of that, is we know that there is a ton of information that's out there if you're out there looking for that, and so we know that we need to try to simplify it. So we're actually putting together some one-page documents. I will tell you right now, they're 11 by 17 folds, because there's a lot of information on there. But we've taken the facility master plan, things that are done, things that are in progress, things that are going to happen, and it's on one sheet with a timeline that's on there so people can see that. It's not this big. We've got it down to that one page and color-coded it so hopefully people can see where it fits. And if you're a graphic learner, you'll see the little flags on there in terms of when those items will be on there. We're also looking forward to the work with the general obligation bond, and so we're trying to do a one-page summary on the finance piece, a one-page summary on the enrollment projections, and then a one-page summary on attendance areas. So you would have those four pages. For this one, we're gonna use the facility master plan so that people can see that and understand what the impact is, so we get that feedback directly on there. But we're planning ahead using a similar format and template for that, so that we'll be ready to push that out, and people will have some familiarity with this and look at this process.
Other feedback mechanism that's gonna be used other than just Thought Exchange?
Hi, that's a good question, and that's actually one of the conversations that they had with us. We don't have anything planned right now. We thought that this actually would be part of that topic discussion.
Well, I think, I don't know, if you could call it a listening post, but like a public forum where you could invite people that aren't interested in clicking on stars to come in and discuss, to discuss, it might be helpful.
Is that a board process or administrative process? Could it be both?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, it could be, could be both. I'm just trying to think of some other instances where we had community discussions where people came in and there was board and administrators both here.
No, I'd like to go out, no, it's a question of when.
Sure.
To, right, because if we get the initial stuff done, enrollment done, it'd be nice to like, for example, go, let's just say we go to PAM to, new school, what comes first, you know what I mean? There might be some more to find. It's a question of, do you do it early, or maybe it's both, or do you do it later when you get some defined issue statements? The one that's easiest is, you know, what elementary should come first, not the way the debate began, and great to do some engagement at PAM or make a PAM out of it.
Sure.
And I would hope that our engagement, the reason I ask the question is because I would not want there to be overlap, that Thought Exchange and the same people attending. I mean, the point of having the, not that we don't want to hear from them, but the point would be that we wouldn't be getting information from the same people so that it seems like there's like double message. We need to get information from the people that aren't a part of Thought Exchange.
The tough part about that is we don't know who responds to it, we don't know who they are, it's anonymous, so we don't see that.
Does it come back by school at all?
Yes, it does come back by school, so we would know if there are schools that have lower participation rates.
Yeah, so that's what I'm getting at.
Yep, yeah, we could definitely do that.
I think that's a great suggestion, Bill. I mean, the whole thing with Thought Exchange is not to, it's a supplement, not the plan, what we're doing for the engagement set.
And Laura, we would know some of that after this phase. I mean, you can participate independently, you can do this and not that, you cannot do that and do this. So, but after this one, we'd be able to pinpoint those schools that had high and low participation rates, and that might be a great opportunity to schedule some of those listening posts then with those schools that have low participation rates.
So I think the question is, Steve, you want to propose, can I ask, propose to convert?
Well, I think, given that, I like the idea of targeting those attendance areas that have low participation rates and setting up some listening posts. Based on what Bill said, I think that there's benefit then to having board members and administrators present to hear input and answer questions.
So you'll build that into this process somewhere.
I wonder if when the, you know, when the email goes out, if the Thought Exchange link might make sense to say, there will be other forum opportunities along, you know, as you've all asked.
And so I guess we'll do both, right? So the first wave would be input, and then maybe later we get into specific work engagements. This way there's a pretty winner break.
Yeah, I would propose that you'd actually want to have some of this done, some of those low participating schools here, you'd want to catch in November, so you had the opportunity to get some feedback from them, so that you would have that about the same time this comes in.
Just in order to maximize input, though, what's the likelihood of getting building administrators to do a blackboard call to their school communities that encourage them to take part in this?
And? We'll be using their newsletters, we'll be using their communication, whether it's social media or blackboard texting.
Just because, again, most people, I think, they don't have a building administrator more than, you know, central administration, so that's who they think of as their go-to. Maybe, maybe I'm wrong, maybe it's a generalization.
No, I think you're right. Plus, I think there'd be a real difference between an email that says, "Chime in about the facility's master plan," and an email that says, "Do you think, you know, Grant Elementary should open here instead of there?" Which if it goes to a certain neighborhood, I think you'd get a big response.
Well, I think if Principal Proud contacts Gardner Elementary and said, "Hey, come on, guys, we need your help with this," I think it says a lot more than when you just...
I agree, some confidence was we heard.
So now, winner break would be discovering, and after we come back and...
Yeah, the intent, I think, we'll be pushing this report out to you here, that first board meeting in December, and if we can get those listening posts scheduled, we'd like to gather that data and compile that and bring it back to you at the same time so that you have it from both the in-person and the electronic simultaneously.
And then we come back after winner break. You might have the issue statements.
Right, we'd like to give it to you then, because we'll also be giving you the DeYoung-Richter report at the same time, so try to get all the raw material to you simultaneously.
So that will be part of our process in like January, February?
Right, the diverge, converge.
Right. So we're looking at you being the man to help to define the process, and we can certainly, you know, whatever we want to do, whatever we want to participate.
So then you're thinking sort of January, February for anything we might do?
Yeah, we're to explore.
Is that maybe early enough?
We're hoping January.
Right.
We're hoping January rather than January, February, we're hoping January, we'd like to, because the next step, once you get through that, then the next step is to push out and actually start the community campaign. So ideally, we'd like to do that in February, that gives us about six weeks before we go to spring break, then back after spring break, push hard till the end of the school year, knowing that it's a little bit harder for us in town to engage the community over the summer, so we want to leave them with that, and then we'll still continue to do work over the summer, it might be a little more low-key, and then come back hard at the beginning of the school year.
I mean, there really are two questions, too, we gotta figure out what's it gonna look like, and then how much of it, all of it, whatever.
That's the January work.
So November's the heavy push and discovery, but January really must come back quickly, then.
We want you to sign up those work sessions in January.
We're gonna think about that, then.
Getting her done.
It'd be every week, Deb, you know.
You need to be writing draft language for the bond on the first part of February.
Oh, jeez, and you're describing that once. That's good, we like it.
If you want to, you can just pop down here real quick and talk about that, just go out of order and talk about the bond process.
Any other issue going on, or do you want to talk to the bond? If that's okay. All right. Thanks, Steve.
I had legal counsel help with this, so hopefully all the numbers are accurate, but the little X's on the side over here show that the board is involved and are actions required. And as you can see, when we get into February, the facility master plan needs to be settled, what gets paid for from the bond proceeds, and in what order, and all of those kinds of things all need to be settled so that you can write the draft language. In a GO bond, the language is very, very important. It's not, it's not high-level language, it's rather detailed language on how you're going to spend those dollars. And if the community chooses to pass that, then you have to, you have to follow through with that. You don't have the flexibility to deviate or to vary or to change in that process. And so we really need to have a real solid basis going into the first part of January so that we can write this language according to how it needs to fund the facility master plan. And then, as you can see...
I can interrupt her just a second. So that's maybe one of the differences between the RPS statement, because as Craig and I have been out talking to people about this, that's one of the issues that we've really had to clarify with them. When we did the RPS statement, we wrote it very big picture, and it included every possibility that we might think about spending money on, but it did include specific projects. So as I've heard Craig talk to some folks externally who are asking about this, the one thing that he emphasizes, and I think it's really important for us to take away from it, is this is the projects. So this is a project list as opposed to the facility, or opposed to the revenue purpose statement, which was a product category and type of product. This is the actual product list.
Which is another thing to make a little, and twice about, you know, some six years out, seven years out.
Well, that's really, really true, and it's a good statement. And estimates are important, and estimates need to be pretty accurate. And so, you know, what we currently have built into our facility master plan right now, we're rolling everything up by about 3% a year based on the construction inflation that we're seeing, and, but it truly is an estimate. And so when we get to that point, our architects and engineers will need to very carefully define the scope of work to be done and then provide an estimate as close as possible to what they believe that's going to cost us. And so, you know, these are, this is very detailed work, and so as a board, it would be very, very helpful for you to have that done in January so that we have this, we have a few weeks in which to work on these kinds of details before it comes back for draft language in February. So you are in kind of a tight timeframe as you look at the work that needs to be done and the extent of the work that needs to be done.
And April 25th is the outside last data on which you want to have that line resolved, is that right?
Well, as we show up here, there's a progression in what needs to be done as far as the language as this follows through. There's a petition process that's required, and as fate would have it, I guess, we had a special election which really lowered our requirement for signatures from the previous election when we had, you know, the four board members. So from that perspective, we'd only need 1,400 signatures instead of 6,000 like we needed before, so that's really, really a real positive thing from our perspective.
Now, April 25th, is that the night of a board meeting? Is that the night of a board meeting? So that's the board meeting at which we would say, this is our language, April 25th?
Yes, I believe it is, yep. And then, and then we go into the process with the county developing the ballot question itself for the September election, and then that will be a question at the regular school board election on September 12th, and that's how we have this all laid out and planned. It requires 60% in order to pass.
In regards to what's on there, maybe I missed it, but this is really master plan when you have, you lay out, then everything that needs to be done, that includes the question that's out there, for example, city high and athletic addition, and what that looks like, or what does the M and S move, or what'd be used for?
Absolutely.
And, you know, there's always this thing hanging over us that maybe the same extension will come through in the meantime. If it does, are we still thinking, would you do some kind of bond in September? Does that mean we're gonna have to suddenly change the function of that, or?
Well, that's a great question. It would be wonderful, wonderful to have that option.
Yeah, except if it happens in like, you know, April, suddenly we've got a rewrite that can be done for a smaller situation.
Well...
Depends on what it looks like, too. Depends on whether we get all of it, part of it.
Exactly, and it all depends on how the legislation works out, but I've kind of shared some numbers with you over time, based on what the governor's been proposing, you know, the five eights, the current five-eight scenario where he wants to pull three eights out for water quality and leave schools with five eights of the sales tax, and what that revenue stream looks like and that kind of thing. And for us in ICCSD, it's a really, really large number. You're talking $300 million to $400 million over the next 20 years. And so, you know, it would be a game changer, and that's all I can tell you. Would you need to go out for such a large bond? No, none of that were available. So that would be a decision that this board would need to make on...
Is there some chance that we can end up putting a bond, a small bond in the ballot, plus an RPS to be able to use at the same time on the ballot?
You know, that's a great question, I don't have an answer for you, but I'm not sure what's gonna, what would be required.
It depends on how it's written.
It's all how it's written.
So, Craig, I just wondered, so let's follow this line up for a minute, so we need an assumption on the save.
Right.
So can we get the range? Let's just, so what assumption is, the next slide is just a slide of this session that gets approved as is.
Right.
What would the bond look like in that case?
I have that available for you.
So like in the next work session, can we review that? I guess what I'm looking for, what's the low end and what's the high end? And then I'm looking for like, am I, get your spreadsheet out, let's look at all the options that we're doing.
Right, I've had, we've had extensive conversations with PFM over the last month, and there, we're bringing all of our current cash flow up to date with our current projects, and based on the amount of sales tax that we're currently getting, what we have left, what can we fund, what can't we fund on our existing facility master plan? And then what would need to flow into the GO? And then I have an estimate on what a sales tax extension would be if we were to see the whole penny or five eights of the penny. So I have both of those scenarios for you to...
I think five eights is dead, right? I would, if you don't mind.
You can also use, if the save is passed after you do the GO bond, you can use the save to pay the GO bond off.
Sure.
So if you pass the whole, the late back, and it comes to fruition, you can use it to pay back the deal.
Like two years later or something?
Right, with the caveat that, that you wrote that into your draft language. Otherwise. Otherwise, you can't use the GOs for any other purpose than what you wrote in your draft language.
Well, he doesn't mean to use it for a different purpose, he just means you pay it off with the money from...
Pay the GO bond off of the saver.
Oh, yes, you could.
If they pass legislation after we pass the GO bond.
In my case, there's a requirement of RPS, so we need to write that to our...
So you're saying like, if they didn't get it done in 2017, it would happen in 2018?
Right.
That's one of the, if you go back and look at our current RPS, that's listed as a potential utilization of dollars, because we wrote in there all the possible options that are under law, and that's one.
In fact, you don't even need an RPS to pay off the debt, it's already in code.
Right. It'd be a great thing, you know, if they can't get it done, get it done in two years, you know, you're paying after all your taxes, it works.
But maybe I'm over the limit, so like three scenarios, but it'd be interesting, so you got the rest of the plan is like six years, right?
Right.
Different projects that are in the GO bond. We also look at, what if we GO bond one year, two years, three years, four years, five years? And just understand how big would that bond be?
Right.
Because I kept, over your other process, going, you could GO bond for three years, assuming that in the next three years, save is gonna get done, and if that takes care of the rest, then... Now, again, this is gonna be a lot of options analysis, right? So on one end, it's save gets done now, we do a low-end bond, the other end is we GO bond the whole thing, and then there's a whole bunch of options in between, and it's gonna depend on our assumptions.
Exactly, right.
But I wonder, but now, the issue of what Dwayne said is, you have a tax rate issue for the year or two until we get to pay it off, right? So the question becomes, can we do a tax rate neutral low-end option, or what's the high-end tax rate option?
It's really pretty easy to do, because if we were to go out to the community, let's say, let's pick a number, $200 million, let's just pick a number out of the air, and we were to go for $200 million, we wouldn't sell all of that $200 million worth of debt on day one, it would be sold over four or five years because of arbitrage rules. We have spend-down thresholds we have to meet, so we can only sell as much as the projects that we can physically get done in a certain period of time. So we can actually break these projects down into four or five different bond sales, which is what you're talking about, and you can see how that would work itself out from a tax rate purpose.
Right.
Is it an assumption that we must do a bond even if save passes, let's just say save passes this year, this session? Do we still have to do a bond?
Given our current facility master plan and the requirements under that, the capacity on which we would be able to sell sales tax in the extension would be adequate to fund that plan.
So we would not need to do a bond?
That's correct.
Well, the question would also be, does it depend on save, right? But on some, if we were to build another elementary school, you know?
Well, if you start adding to the plan, then we would have some...
Yeah, right. So one low end could be zero, the other low end is just a re-up of current debt load, right?
Right, I was gonna remind you of that.
So we have much debt load expiring at 2017. In my mind...
And get the same amount.
My man, the answer to your question would be yes, we would do a GO bond. The low end would be like borrowing what are we right now and keeping the tax rate neutral.
What does that math mean in terms of twelve, three dollars, or forty?
You have, yeah, it's fifty, it's about fifty-three cents on the levy right now, which is about a little over forty million dollars for, for a GO bond. That would be an equal amount on the levy.
I don't know why you would do that.
Just even that would still have to be written very particularly.
We have to know what we're...
We have to know what you're gonna spend that forty million dollar bond.
But I like your idea of, so you had the capital, cash flow model, right?
Right.
You've got your, here's the bond issues.
Right.
The bond issues are what we can do the analysis on and just say, okay, let's say there's five bond issues. We decided we do the first two, three, four, five.
Yep.
You can do another GO bond, two year, right?
Right.
Four year, or...
Yes.
I, I wonder a lot, I still wanna get it all done, right? My objective is to get it all done. But save's gonna get extended in my mind. It's just a question of, okay?
Colors the sky.
Partly one more way, man. This is the craziest history ever. They both agree, but they can't get it done. They're gonna get it done eventually, I think. I don't think it's gonna be on three years or so. There's gonna be too much pressure on the schools.
I agree.
So the question is how far do we GO bond, right, to bridge that save gap? Sure, man, man, you gotta help us. We need a spreadsheet that's super cool, but then simple.
Thank you.
Super cool.
So there's so many of ones from PFM right now.
We'll get right on it.
They're super... I was gonna say, I haven't seen too many spreadsheets from Craig that are simple, so that might be the hard part.
But they are super cool, so they're actually there.
Yeah. All the people are simple. The PFM ones are super cool. They're not super simple.
Yeah.
Not super simple.
Is there any other discussion on that or could, so when can we come back with something like that, options, analysis?
I've got an awful lot of that already. I don't have it in a form that I can hand you that's super cool and simple, but at the same time, I have all of that information hanging around.
First meeting in October, that we have work sessions?
First part of...
First meeting in October?
Yeah, we can shoot for that.
Sure. Pretty much get it.
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's reasonable.
Okay, this is again the boss question. I'm segueing for, right? Do you have anything else in the analysis? Can we get a simple reconciliation, one pager? Facility master plan 2013 was this, you know, money.
Right.
Fifteen, we made some tweaks, adjustments.
We have that.
But I'm, I'm looking for the simple version, right? The athletic facilities master plan got added, right?
Right.
And then the part that gets weird is the inflation.
Right.
Impact. I think it's easy to talk through thirteen, fifteen, the athletic facilities and then we'll take, we review that too with the simple version is.
We have, we have that on a spreadsheet.
And that is very simple.
I've kinda got it here myself, but I just wanted to check it.
Should we be able to do that?
So that we can like explain it to everybody. Easy. If we get a look at those two things next work session, I think that we...
We can. And I think it's very timely that we do that. The sooner we, and then, and Dwayne and I are actually getting input and working on the facility master plan right now as far as, you know, we, we're well into this and there, there are some things in our environment that have changed and there are some things that we probably need to bring to you and for you to consider making a tweak on or here or there. Maybe we don't need a classroom over here based on what we're seeing for our enrollment, but, you know, maybe, maybe over here, we need a few more classrooms based on, on where we're seeing our students go. And so we, we really wanna bring you some of those tweaks as we see them happening and let you consider those as a part of adjustments to the plan as we move into that January timeframe. We'd like to get them to you sooner than later so we can all know what we're dealing with. And maybe you have ideas from listening to the community members yourself and we'll collect feedback from staff and, and try and do the best job we can to assimilate these into, into a list of things that we possibly want to adjust the plan to reflect.
When do you wanna read that?
Sooner than later. Do you have an idea when?
Well, we have an operations meeting in October.
You wanna try to shoot for then?
Sure. Who's that, Sarah?
Well, can we just do a work session all in October?
Yeah.
Do it at the same time?
I think you should just do the whole work.
Okay. Well, we can, we can have what we can have done.
Get her done.
Yeah. So we come back, first week, first meeting in October, GO bond analysis, then tweaks or whatever.
A reconciliation of the plan so you kinda know where we've been, where we're, where we're at, and then some, some ideas on what we're seeing, some pinch points in the plan.
The projections though will...
Well, the projections are gonna be a huge part of that.
Sure.
And we won't know that.
We're seeing some already though, I think is what they're saying.
Yeah, we're, we're seeing some already.
Your additional assessment.
Well, we know which buildings are crowded and we're making questions.
We're gonna talk about the weighted resource allocation model in a minute. That's caused some additional pinch points in the plan.
Yes, sure.
So it's not gonna be so...
Can you say one more thing in the bond? I think it's important for us to know by November to be able to start to articulate the legislative requirements to our District Johnson County. So the second November election's over, if we can start articulating why it's important to our district to get saved on this next session.
Plus, if we're going out to the community in November, it would be nice to be able to have a pretty good idea of what we're talking to them about.
And keep in mind, we've got an opportunity right now because for the first time, you got the Iowa Farm coming out and, and talking about use of either continuing and available sources of revenue or new sources of revenue. And that's a new caveat in their conversation that they're willing to look at a new source of revenue. So that, that really changes the discussion about extending save and instead of becoming an either or discussion, it might become an and discussion. And so that might change some of the legislative pressure.
All right, any other questions? All right, voluntary transfer. So I think we've got a administrative record in there.
Yep. Pull that up here. So we have been wrestling, be a good way to describe it, Matt, wrestling with our secondary administrators, try to come up with something that they think will work for them as building administrators. Will tie in philosophically with board intent through various actions that the board's taken and be something that we can use for some time so that it creates some level of known process for the community. And I'll, I'll do a quick summary and then let Matt jump in. One of the things we did was we looked at a parallel with the elementary schools. So for those of you that don't know that in depth at the elementary level, when we look at voluntary transfers, we look at it grade level by grade level because we're really looking at it classroom by classroom. And so if you've got a student who currently goes to Schimmick and that student wants to go to Mann, we will take that voluntary transfer request. We will look at Mann at the grade level that the student is applying for and decide whether or not there's space in that classroom. Secondary level's a little bit different because obviously they're taking multiple classes at the secondary level. So in our conversation with the building administrators, we moved from looking at it in the classroom by classroom basis like we do at the elementary level and started looking at it based on the number of seats that are available in a building. So the numbers that are on here are capacity numbers. And so you'll notice in both the first and the second point there that we've got some percentages listed when it comes to capacity. And the conversation with the building principals was essentially not different than what we get at the elementary level, which is we don't wanna get too full because remember one of the things that we're talking about in the last bullet is December first. I'll let Matt talk about why that's an important date, but if we're looking at December first, one of the things that the secondary principal said was we need some space in our buildings because we are going to have kids that are going to enroll in school after December first, right up to the start of the next school year. And so we don't want to be too full so we can't accept them and accommodate them into our schedule. So you see that ninety-five percent number in the first one and then just like we do at the elementary level?
Can I just interject real quick? Is it, for some reason, more often the case that more people come in than leave? Because people must leave.
Oh, sure. Yeah, we get people that leave. Good news for us, not necessarily a problem, I would say it's an opportunity. We get more in than we lose. And that happens both throughout the school year and then at the start of the next school year. So we'll lose fewer students that we'll get in. At the bottom end, one of the big concerns that we have was about making sure that we've got a viable population in each school in short order to ensure that we've got the breadth of course offerings. And so they looked at a lower bound, eighty-five percent, and then eighty percent after the new construction is completed. So that's just a real broad overview and Matt, can I share some of the details?
Sure, thanks, Steve. Steve referenced the December first deadline from working with the principals and, and going through this myself. It's, it's just important, that's the time of year when schedules start to be built, students make requests for courses and staffing is then aligned based on that student choice for courses and how we build those sections for the needed courses that we need to staff. So that December first timeline, if we had those, if we had the knowledge of where students were moving to and which attendance center, then we'd be able to better build a schedule and not have late staffing changes or end up with class sizes that are uncomfortable. We could be very efficient in that manner. If, as you get later into the spring, those schedules start to get built, principals start to staff, those, those sections, we make hires, all of those things. So later you get beyond that point, the more you're reacting to situations than you are planning for situations. I think the, the recommendation put forth from the secondary team, really kind of the intent behind it is to prevent huge swings, right? I mean, I think that's the concern is, you know, that a building's gonna swing for whatever reason, one way or another, too big, too small, you know, one demographic or another. I think that's, that's what it tries to do and it also gives us a process that we have some ability to manage. You know, we talked about some other factors, possibly being something to consider in that and I, I don't think there, there's a way to handle that, right? There's no, there's no way for us to manage or facilitate a process like this. I think this would give us something with straight capacity that would, and you can manage the process and it would also, I think, address some of those concerns that our secondary team has or that we've heard from community, community members too. So that's my big overview. I don't know if you have specific questions in regards to it, but...
So as we start to work weighted resource model into the secondary levels and that tends to fill up some schools maybe a little bit quicker, you know, capacity wise, I mean, that, that's all gonna be taken into account.
For example, Alexander's space is... That's a good question. That's a good comparison because when we do the weighted resource allocation model, it doesn't change the capacity of the building.
Right.
Capacity of building's still the same, but the way we staff the building changes and so then the number of spaces that we would prefer to have available to us changes. So, you know, the capacity of Alexander hasn't changed, but because of the demographic profile of the school, we've got more staff in there. So now a year after opening, we've got portables parked out back. We, we experienced something similar at the secondary level, that is, as we look at how we staff them and how the weighted resource allocation model might come into play there. You might have more sections, which wouldn't change the capacity of the building, but it might change how we use it. You know, ideally, you have enough space so that you have teachers that are able to do their preparation work in the classroom where they're teaching because frequently it's space dependent and they're doing things that are preparing for lessons that are about to take place. So you'd like to have them in there doing that, I can tell you right now, frequently teachers are not able to do that. So that actually allows you to flex a little bit inside the capacity of the building because it becomes a use factor as opposed to an actual building capacity factor. So I think like with the elementary schools, we can, from a process standpoint, we can accommodate the RAM, actually a little easier at the high school level because there are simply more available spaces during the day. How we use them has a different set of priorities to it and just like we're doing right now at the schools that are overcrowded at City and West, we're using them for what would be preferred second choices, which is actual instructional classrooms as opposed to being able to run some of those other programs in there at the same time, but we have the ability to do that. So there's a little bit more flexibility at the secondary level to put the RAM in place without actually having to build out on...
Would it make sense at the elementary level to rethink, either rethink our capacity numbers or, or choose a different name like target enrollment and come up with a different set of numbers for those buildings? Because Alexander's not a five hundred kid school right now. Building, I mean, it's not a five hundred kid building.
The way we're using it is not.
Yeah, you, you could have numbers based on the intended use of the building that might be more meaningful to use.
Right. So right now, our capacity is not weighted. Our use is weighted, but our capacity isn't. And that's the challenge for us right now. So that's a little bit harder to do at the secondary level just because a classroom might be used for multiple content areas and so how you weight it could depend on whether, you know, who's in there which period of the day. But like I said, we've got a little bit more flexibility because we don't necessarily have a hundred percent utilization. If you've got a third grade class, they're in there all day and that's why you have the portables out there. It's why we're able to accommodate the number of kids we can at City and West right now with a very small number of portable units because it's how we use the space. But I think you're right. I think in the long term, it would probably be to our benefit to go back to our modeling and start creating weighted capacity.
It could also influence how much additional capacity we think we need in places. So for circle advantages, if they go up for our schools other than the corridor, maybe we can fit more, maybe, maybe we will be putting more kids in those buildings than we had, you know, originally thought and we would need to build as much and we'd have to borrow as much and ask for people as much.
I don't know if that's the right example. Yeah, it, it is. And probably our biggest challenge is at the bottom end of the spectrum just because it's far more likely at the, at that end of the weighted resource allocation model that we're adding a classroom. At the other end, it's not as likely that you're losing a classroom, it's just how many kids are in there. I think that there are fewer opportunities, as Amy and I went through it, where we actually saw ourselves reducing a whole classroom type of thing. Also at that upper end, sometimes we're using the home room and then the literacy math instruction piece and so you've got some breakouts that are going on. So sometimes you actually need that classroom for part of the day.
Oh, no, absolutely.
Yeah.
But I'm thinking about Garner.
Yeah.
And, you know, yes, there are too many kids at Garner, but I look at the actual capacity number on and I think, well, we're gonna have more kids there than that. I mean, under the weighted resource allocation model, is Garner?
Well, I think as we get further along the path, I think trying to figure out a way to do a weighted capacity model to tie into weighted resource allocation model would help us long term.
Now, on your secondary, when you're talking about the high schools, when you're figuring the capacity of a high school, what's the, I guess, the occupancy rate of the room? What, what, what figure are you using as far as the...
The number we could use right now is that, and I don't have that chart handy with me right now, but it would be that big master chart that we have that has the capacity numbers that came out of the facility study. And fifteen ninety-three is one of the numbers that sticks in my head.
Well, no, my, my, my question is, is, you know, you're absolutely right. It depends on the, how often the room is being used. What is, what are, what are we saying is the occupancy of the room is, are we still having an open period in every single one? That's my question.
Yes, that, that, sorry, that's a very good point because that's why you see the numbers the way they are. So even though it says that, you know, City High can only handle twelve hundred ninety-three kids right now, that we actually have seventeen hundred kids in there because that's the ideal, that you would have rooms available for teachers to prep in and, and you'd have five class periods in there so you'd have some flexibility in the, in the space. We're not doing that right now, so we can pack a lot more kids in from an efficiency standpoint. May not be ideal, but it certainly works for us. So that gives us a different, it goes back to Chris's comment, it gives us a different utilization of the space. So it gives us a, a maximum capacity, if you will, versus the ideal capacity.
So I think to your point though, although, you know, when that study was done, I would assume they would have looked at those different rooms, science classrooms versus common areas, right, things like that to determine those capacities because I think what you're saying is, you know, well, one classroom might be physically full, twenty-five kids.
Essentially, it's a hot, it's a hot bump question, you know?
Yeah.
Yep.
You know, if we have, if we have them being utilized all the time and it's not ideal, it's not bad, but it is an option, what that is.
Does anybody have issue with what you've been recommending?
Well, I have a couple more questions about it. So the eighty percent capacity figure is probably, is probably not a federal income base, but to me, I almost wonder if that, if at the secondary level, it makes sense just to have a, an absolute number as the bias of the floor instead of a percent.
I mean, if we somehow miraculously found ourselves in a situation where more than twenty percent of West had, you know, if there was room for them somewhere else, I don't know if that would happen, West could survive with less than thirteen or fifteen, which is my estimate, you know, eighty percent. So I just don't know, but I'm not against defining, you know, boundaries for what it means to have capacity in place. The thing about voluntary transfer, those people that are December first, what happens when someone moves into the district on January first? Do they get to ask to be transferred to a school other than their assigned school or no?
I don't know if we necessarily have guidance surrounding that right now, so I think we would, you know, deal with that. Usually we have a process in place where they need to make those decisions, you know, within some kind of reasonable time period, so I think we can work through something like that, you know.
Amy and I do at the elementary level. So we have people that move in and frequently, well, not frequently, but it is not uncommon for them to move in and have a lack of understanding of our elementary attendance zones and so they think they live somewhere, but they don't. They go to school somewhere else rather than where they thought it was and so now they're in looking for a voluntary transfer. We do that, just like we would do this, which is, what are the numbers saying? Is there room in that classroom? And we do remind them at the elementary level, it's an annual process and so next year they have to go back through and do the reapplication process.
But you don't cut them off because they're late?
We don't cut them off because they're late, but we do look at it based on the space available and depending on how late they're moving in, we do remind them it's an annual process.
But it's only for people that are moving in, presumably anybody who's here is gonna be subject to.
Right, and they've gotta go through it. Now, maybe one of the things that's not in here, which would be important for you to know, is that we do get hardship transfers, yeah. And that is, we've got kids who've experienced bullying or harassment, they've had other adverse situations that have taken place and so we treat those on an individual basis and analyze those and then make decisions based on the needs of the student. It's uncommon, but not unheard of, that we have a student that winds up moving into a building and at a grade level that we otherwise would not allow a voluntary transfer into, but that's allowed because that's in the best interest of the student.
And they have to reply every year still for those?
It depends on what it's for. Some of those are more permanent type issues. Let's see if I can give you one that's relatively generic, but I won't go into too much detail. We've had some protective custody orders, issues, and it has been in the student's best interest to be geographically removed from that standpoint and so we've done that on a permanent basis. That's applied.
That's at your discretion.
Right.
Is the standard use for that pretty much the same one you use for cause, open enrollment?
Yes, it is.
And Chris, can I just go back to your first point you made about West and, you know, can it survive? And yes, it can survive. If we get some, I think the concern though, you have to talk about if any school going below that eighty percent, as we kind of looked at it, is just competitive programming and kind of what our expectations are for that, being a comprehensive four-year high school and being competitive and that. Depending on where those numbers go, I would think that's what, if the principals were sitting here, that's what they would tell you, that, you know, just trying to protect against if that number gets too low, then, you know, does that start to affect your programming options and pieces there, so.
Yeah, I can definitely see that on this side.
Maybe one other point.
It's never gonna happen, right? I mean, we're never gonna have so much room in the university.
Not right now.
I would say never, but I would guess.
Given the growth that we have right now, I'd say no. The university shuts down.
I think it's actually a real possibility, because if we look at our projections in 2019, when all of the students have gone to Liberty, West is gonna be at eighty-four point nine percent. So that essentially means that all Alexander students or any other students that we transfer out will not be allowed to.
That's it, that's.
I think West would be the one, I mean, you're right, that's the conversation point. It would be West that we'd be talking about on that bottom end capacity, we're looking at, you know, who would fall into that category.
And a long-term part of the idea too is that if you look at it and we get down to the end here, after we've done the additions at City High and we've done that second wing at Liberty, they'll all be very close. Liberty's fifteen hundred, City's fifteen ninety-three, I forget, West is off the top of my head, but the idea was to get them all fairly close to each other, so then the percentage actually keeps the number fairly close to each other.
But the capacity's different though.
No, that's what I'm saying, capacity's fifteen hundred, Liberty fifteen ninety-three, at City, and I can't remember what it is at West.
We've got twenty-one hundred there now, but not that it makes any sense, but.
Sixteen eighty-four.
Sixteen eighty-four.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sorry, I can, I mean, I can totally see what you're saying about the sort of, you know, comparative programming part, put on that side of scale, and this side of the scale for me is, gee, if there's room somewhere else and that's where somebody wants to go, I mean, there's value to giving people the opportunity to go there. Those numbers might be a little higher than I would make them anyway in those two things.
And that is exactly the bait that we had with the secondary administrators being what.
Now, again, we talked about how Liberty, you don't want that to fall below, I think it was two hundred students per class, period, you know, because then you really have a problem. I can understand there'd be some bottom line number, you think just wouldn't wanna fall below, I don't know, about eighty percent or eighty-five, especially if, we need to know if making that decision is basically telling Alexander people, you will not be allowed to transfer. We can run those, grab those capacity numbers and share those ranges with you, so you can see where those are at. That might help with that process.
Well, we have the projection already for West without Kirkwood. We already have those numbers and in 2019, with, including all of the Tate students, which won't be there, the number, the percentage of capacity at West will be eighty-four point nine percent. So when we take out the Tate students, it's gonna be under eighty-five, you know, unless there's some fabulous growth or something, but I don't think there's, we'll find out, but I think the growth is probably largely going to Liberty. I'm concerned. I feel like that's unfair to the Alexander population, to have a number that we know is going to, as of 2019, stand in the way of them being able to transfer out if they need to for sibling reasons or, you know, whatever the reason is. And I guess another thing we could add to this, another way around this, is that we could say that some of these sibling situations should be considered, because I do think it's a hardship to ask a family to have one driving student going to one school and a non-driving student going to a school that's much further away. That's a good excuse for that family to move and we really don't want our neighborhoods to become even more concentrated with poverty than they already are, so I would think that would be a bad outcome.
Just to address two of the things that you said, I think in Chris's suggestion, his memo, he adds that in there, the one-time hardship transfer for any students or families who've already had significant disruption due to changes in attendance boundaries, I think we could add that other part that you're talking about with the families, does that agree with that?
With siblings?
Yeah.
Which has been referred to as grandfathering in the past.
Well, bootstrapping, I think.
What's that?
That'd be bootstrapping, right?
Bootstrapping.
Is the term.
I don't know, I've heard it called grandfathering, but whatever.
What's a defined bootstrapping and a defined grandfathering?
Bootstrapping when you pull one. Bootstrapping when you bring the siblings along with you.
Okay.
Grandfounding is this how it was before the South East city policy changed?
Now, Matt will probably tell me I'm an N of one on this one, but I would say that I would much rather have you address it from a percentage number than put in place a bunch of grandfathering and bootstrapping because it's very hard to manage that.
Well, here's what I'd be okay.
So I would be more inclined to look at your concern.
To change that number.
I may be only one, I'm not speaking on behalf of the secondary administrators because we had a long go-round about this, so I just wanna make sure that I'm not representing them, but.
Well, West is still gonna, I mean, right now they're at twenty-one hundred, so West at eighty-five percent is still gonna be higher than Liberty in 2019. So it's not like they're gonna be, you know, massively losing programming.
There won't necessarily be a whole lot of seats at City for people to.
That's what my second point was going to be, was that you specifically mentioned Alexander and I understand why, but for them, they're probably wanting to transfer to City High at the ninety percent level, ninety-five percent level, they wouldn't even have that option according to these numbers until 2021.
The City number doesn't reflect Tate either, so there might be more seats there than appears in those projections.
Just going off of the same theory of using these numbers. I don't even know what the role for Romans is gonna be, but just in my memo, that's why I referred to kind of a one-time, if we have exceptions, I suggest they're like one-time exceptions.
Like for one year?
No. Like you apply now.
And you're granted that for the rest of your high school years.
Let's say you have a sibling somewhere to your recommendation, you would apply now for them to stay at Southeast City and that'd be like that. So it isn't a multi-year, where grandfathering's failed in the past, it's like five years after the decision.
Right.
You're still having new people trigger the rules.
Right.
Right, and so in your proposal, they don't have to reapply every year, you would lock them in?
Yes, be a one-time exception.
He goes over to family.
But that, you're talking about.
I don't know, I'm just.
Are we talking about kids that are already in junior high and high school or are we talking about kindergarten?
Here's what I'm gonna be clear, like in the instance of a tenth grader who's gonna be a junior and has a younger sibling who's gonna be a freshman, but let's say there's a third sibling who's like a second grader right now, I would think that doesn't, I don't see that apply to the second grader. And that's, bootstrapping traditionally would be, that applies to the whole family, everybody gets to go forever.
We had a family come here a couple meetings ago and I forget the name, but they had a sibling that's in junior high and they, and another one that's in elementary school. They had no problem going with the.
Oh, I hear what you're talking about.
The, the, the materialization or where they're gonna go navigate the system for the younger child, it's just they want, they wanted the one that's in seventh or eighth grade to continue on that path. And, but even in, if I understand it correctly and the way it is now, if they voluntarily transferred in, every year they'd have to reapply. And to me, I think it's fair to a family to say, we lock you in and that, now I understand it poses more.
Oh, just as that.
It's more balls in the air and things like that.
You could have a family that had a twelfth grader, a ninth grader, a sixth grader, a third grader and a kindergarten and the argument about having two kids in school at the same time in two different schools would apply all the way down to the kindergartner. And the reason I said that I would prefer not to manage that is we are struggling logistically to manage that right now with the simple grandfathering and bootstrapping for just the Lincoln neighborhood that we had. Now we're talking about the district as a whole and, you know, kindergarten, they're not going to be high school students for eight years and so now we've gotta figure out some way to track every one of those families in order to make sure that we don't lose them. And that's really hard to do and so that's why I said, and that's why Matt can chime in here, that's why I argued at length that the, we needed this to be as simple as possible. It's easier for families and in all honesty, it's easier for the administrative staff at the secondary level to make sure that they don't miss somebody.
So that's why I did the one-time thing.
Well, that's what I said, is it, is it the family? Because if it's not, what about the kindergartner who eventually would have to split from the third grader?
Well, for me, maybe I didn't articulate this, but I was kind of where Phil was at, I think that this would only apply to kids that are already in the secondary system.
Right.
And they're just asking to finish. I agree with you, anybody else who's?
Because in eight years, they could actually apply for voluntary transfer and they can get in. We don't know that eight years from now, you know what I'm saying? I'm just like, trying to chase that down is way too hard versus you got an eighth grader right now, you know what I'm saying? Like that makes sense to me, okay, you're a sophomore, you have an eighth grader, let them go ahead and get through school and graduate, go on with life, but your kindergarten at home, we're not about to wait eight years for them to get to the high school, like that's, that's just too, that's just unreasonable. I'm just saying, by the time they get there, who knows what the boundary will look like by then, you know what I'm saying? I'm just gonna be realistic.
I appreciate that, because that was the language that, and you were here as board member, but that was, that's essentially the language that we had with Lincoln and so we're still trying to keep track of those kids and I think the last kid left elementary school last year.
So a lot of the emotion, a lot of the emotion though is centered around not only friends and relationships, but also extracurriculars, co-curriculars, sports, music, so on and so forth. And when you become, I think, part of those teams at the junior high level, part of those musical groups and debates, so on and so forth at the junior high level, you expect to work with those kids into the high school level. So I agree, but when you're at the elementary level, you haven't made those relationships at the junior high level yet.
Yeah, but I'm getting a little confused about some stuff and so are we saying that if you're on the Southeast City path and you're in junior high right now, we're gonna let you go all the way through City High?
No.
No.
Because we're telling freshmen and sophomores at West, they gotta go.
Uh-huh.
So who are we telling that to at City or at Southeast or Southwest? I'm just having a hard time figuring, and also I'm wondering, are we, if we do stuff like that, are we saying regardless of capacity?
I think that we were just referring mainly to the situations like were brought ahead, brought to us with families that had siblings in two different places or have been moved multiple times.
Okay, so a sibling situation.
At least that's how, what I assumed we were. Well, I think there's two, yeah, it's like, so families already have multiple moves, which would kind of be like Lincoln Hills, maybe, but probably all the geographies. I could buy a hardship, if there's some hardship with the family and siblings, I could buy it, but I guess we'd have to define exactly what that would like.
I also pointed out, Ben Allen, is a tiny little segment of people that are in a position being chosen to.
Well, if we had this process around hardship, it could follow the same thing.
Whoa.
Now, when I say hardship to you, I don't want this to be a form process, this needs to be an administrative process, because I don't want it to go all political and, you know, you're supposed to always appeal or whatever, but it needs to go, kind of be handled based on the facts and done.
Could we establish an appeal process though?
Well, you gotta penic six, but. If this is a form process, I'm not, yes, we're not gonna do that.
You're gonna hear a lot of.
Can I flip it for one second?
You're gonna hear a lot of appeals if that's.
Can I just flip this for one second? So just think about it a different way, playing devil's advocate. In the instance of an eighth grader that's going into high school and a tenth grader is gonna be a junior, okay, we're talking about it as the younger child follows the path of the older, older child, possibly if they apply, if that's important to them as a family to apply. Could you also say it's important to them as a family that both children at the same school, that the older child should be encouraged to go where the younger child is? I mean, that's the flip side of it.
That is the flip side.
Is that if a family is making, if that's important to a family, then that's an inside of the family discussion, where you say to the older kid, yeah, I know you wanna finish up at West.
Well, we've already promised the juniors and seniors that they get to stay at West, so.
They don't even choose to.
That they can choose to.
And what I'm saying, what I'm saying is that mom and dad, mom or dad or somebody in the house has to say, hey, you know what, it's gonna be a heck of a lot easier for us if you go to Liberty where your younger brother slash sister is gonna be home. I'm just flipping it to play devil's advocate, because we're trying to solve problems, sometimes people in their own house should be solved.
Yeah, I hear you, it was a good one, though, if there's a junior wanting to finish up.
I mean.
No, it's true, though, right, I mean, the family could make that decision.
I know my dad would have said, it's easier for us.
I think, I think we don't wanna underestimate the fact that, just as the students told us tonight, they're very invested in their schools and it would be, you know, what I've heard from families, and these are families that do have the means and they are serious, they will move out of the Kirkwood area, out of the Alexander area. That's where I've heard it. Maybe it's other places as well, but these are families of means, it would be very sad for them to leave the neighborhoods. So I would not, I would like us not to establish a situation that just facilitates that.
As the sound of this here of discussing, I think it needs to be said, that it's important that people within their own households have discussions as well, because we're trying to solve every individual household problem here. And with it, sometimes the discussion at home needs to happen.
You know, another distinction.
It's our problem, the older child.
Oh, I get what you're saying. Another distinction we could think about, maybe, I don't know if you're interested, but yeah, we're telling freshmen and sophomores at West, they gotta go, you know, who are gonna be freshmen and sophomores, one of the real ones, they gotta go, and that could be have to do that. It might be a little different to tell a City High student who's been reassigned away from virtually everybody else in their high school that they gotta go. So a Lincoln student who's gonna be assigned to Liberty is in a little bit different shoes than a West High student.
Right, eight hundred kids.
An Alexander kid that's gonna be shifted over to West is not moving the path of this high school over to West. And so you might have a little more sympathy for, say, a sophomore in that situation. And by the way, are we, are we, is it true that an Alexander junior and senior in 2017 will be allowed to stay at City, just like the West High juniors and seniors will be allowed to stay at West?
That's what I understand.
So all juniors and seniors everywhere can stay if they're.
If they're shifted. That's the case on West High. So do we ever treat sophomores to?
Nope. Nope. Do we have a record we can put down a paper? That's why I tried to put that paper.
I have another question. So the December first deadline, I know you said that, that you still look at things after that. But, you know, the two schools I'm, you know, I'm talking about have extremely high mobility. Well, there, we've already said in the junior high that they're guaranteed voluntary transfer regardless of capacity. Is this definitely gonna change that at all for them if they move in after?
For the two year.
If they move in in the second week of August and they can see Northwest across their lawn, can they attend there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Similar to how you guys just started talking about the elementary process.
Yeah, and the nice thing about it in that sense is that they're in our system. So it's really easy for our secondary administrators to transfer me from one school to the other and carry all my registrations with me. And then they just have to figure out what is my, and they have a hand schedule. What is my schedule gonna look like based on where are the seats for the courses that I'm looking for? So that's a little bit more challenging, but that's, that's the same thing if somebody moves in.
We will permit that regardless of the deadline, regardless of capacity.
The deadline's intent really is to get the large chunk, right? So if we know if there's a sizable group that's gonna affect staffing in one way or another, that we have that promise. So then as we get these other scenarios, you know, to treat a family.
And you want people to register right the first time, right?
Right.
So if they're here, they're gonna register, you have our Sanford classes or whatever, you want them to do it right the first time.
Yeah.
And maybe one of the ways to think about it is, because you saw this as we went through the year. It's, I won't say the word easy. It's easier for us to add a section of third grade somewhere than it is for us to add a section of biology or Spanish or geometry or something like that. Because unless you actually have a class that's huge, that could be divided, to just simply put another section there is really hard to populate. So our big challenge is actually the move, the move you described, the August move. That's the hard one, which is why, if you remember looking at that frequency chart that we did last year that showed you like all the sections of algebra. And you know, some of them had twenty-two of them and some of them had thirty-five of them, thirty-five kids in them. That's why, because as kids move in and out of the district and then you're trying to get their schedule to align with where the sections are offered, sometimes you can't plug them into the one that has twenty-two because you just can't get them in there. And so, the.
You might not have a teacher to add to either.
Right, so the later that they move into the system, the less clean the system is. And so, that's why we like to get everybody registered at the same time, get them plugged in, get the staff allocated, build a master schedule, plug them in in nice even chunks, as even as we can get.
So can I try this? I assume everybody's okay with continuing hardship transfers, safety, security, health. There's a record on the table that I think we're mostly okay with, maybe wondering about the lower percentage. Right?
Yeah, I think that first question was out.
I think everybody's okay.
Lower percentage.
Whatever we, be okay with some form of hardship request, whether it be multiple disruptions or some other family need.
I, I, I might be, I kind of wish we could just delineate them in advance. I think you kind of know where the issues are.
Do you think you're gonna define all the rules then new people come out with new scenarios?
Maybe. I mean, I guess I would leave the door open, but I, I wanna make sure that we knew that we're gonna catch certain people. And I think there's some, I could put your boundaries on them, well, like Van Allen. Those sixth graders at Van Allen.
Okay, but we're talking.
Stay.
I thought we were talking secondary transfers.
Well, I'm talking about all the way through, you know.
Yeah, but this would apply to them, so they got a hardship based on multiple moves. This would be their avenue to apply to.
Well, I just wanna make sure that we're on the same page with Steve and what will and won't count as a hardship.
Sure.
And that's part of my fears that we, like I said, that's why when we sat down as a secondary group, I was pushing hard for simplicity. Because I worry we're forgetting.
But then we just, so we got it for multiple, multiple attendance changes, right? That kind of, again, it'd be the same thing we just talked, right? If you're an elementary student, it'd have to be multiple changes at the elementary level. Your secondary student would have to be multiple changes at the secondary level. So maybe Van Allen fit at the elementary level.
And the North Lincoln, North Lincoln, South.
It's fit in the secondary, right? So it'd have to be within that group. And then if there's a hardship to the family, again, I know we gotta be careful with this one because that tend to really pride some way the family should deal with it. But why not let it apply? Understand the situation, understand the numbers. And then, you know, we gotta principal basis look at the hardships and decide.
I do have another issue that relates to that.
Chris is, is, could you get the opposite, could you agree to that?
I think I, I think I'm with you on that. As long as, you know, we sort of talked out certain ones that we think, you know, we, we do think those would count. Even if we don't sort of write that into whatever the policy says, there's sort of, there's an informal understanding about certain things that would count.
Does it make any friends so bad you can't do it, Steve?
I'm not quite paper locking yet, but I'm.
That's good.
I, you know, when you say a family challenge, what's not a family challenge? Steve, it'd be easier if you actually tried to write? I mean, if you, we know sort of what they are, and if you just run them in a bunch of discrete categories of people, that would count.
We can, that might be easier. That might be easier.
I mean, then I think you're just running the risk of then you're saying yes to a lot of things, right? Or if we say no to a lot of things, you're gonna end up hearing a lot of appeals. I think that's the, that's the tricky part, Chris, would be. So either we're gonna probably, you know, exercise a lot of, okay, that's a hardship and say yes to a lot of hardships. Or then we're gonna be on the other side of trying to deny some, and then people are gonna expect to hear from somebody after us, right? So I think those would be the.
Maybe I just be canceled the same way I was with the secondary administrators. So I would just share a personal scenario with you that'll help you understand this.
Perfect.
I sat in orientation for parents at West High two weeks ago. And two desks over was a family that was about as uncomfortable as you could possibly imagine. Because they live in the city high attendance zone. Their kids should not be going to West High. Somehow they've managed to get their kids into West High. They don't live there, which I know for a fact. Uh, and, and I'm sure they were incredibly uncomfortable when the superintendent, even in his civilian clothes, walked into that classroom and sat down two desks away from them when they know that I know that they don't live in the West High attendance area. So my concern is what's a hardship? What, anytime that you have things that have soft definitions on them, people will find a way to work around, under, over, through it. Uh, which is why I pushed the secondary team so hard to say, I would like something that gives the greatest latitude. And I'll tell you right now, Matt can confirm that I was the only one in the room voicing that option. I'd like to give people the greatest latitude that they can in a situation which does not encourage people to buy, cheat, or steal. Uh, and, and if we can set it up, which is why we came up with the eighty-five, ninety-five rule. And if, if we need to explore a different number to make sure that they're out there, because I wasn't thinking about it like that. Uh, but if we need to explore a different number that's out there, I would much rather give parents and students the opportunity to say, I would like to go here under a situation that gives them the right to voluntarily transfer there, just like a kid next door, versus I've gotta go in and build a statement of need. Because now what am I supposed to do? Brian comes to me and says, oh, we have to go to that school because this kid's gonna drive that kid. I drive over to his house and see how many cars he's got parked in the driveway? So wait a minute, you got a kid, a car for each kid. That's not a hardship for you. Um, I, that's a hard position to put us in, to be honest with you. That's just a really hard position that.
So you're saying open up voluntary transfer, let's let people apply.
Figure out what the upper and lower bounds are, and I'll have to go back and do some battle with the secondary administrators on that. But I, asking people to apply for a hardship and then asking our secondary administrators to define hardship and then asking them to investigate and validate hardship, it's tough on kids, it's tough on families. And I think it sets up a wrong set of incentives.
Plus, I think it's nice if your hardship definition can be the same as the one for open enrollment. So if you start.
But that's not gonna catch those kids who the older brother drives the younger sister's in school.
We should write that out when we think, when we think that's legitimate and we isn't. Let me know, so we'll know if someone falls into category X, they get it, or category Y, they don't get it. So it might be a bunch of different things we'd have to write out.
I think as soon as you start to find it though, Chris, you're gonna, I mean, there is gonna be a situation that doesn't fall in love. I think that's the, I mean, there's.
It might not be able to anticipate everything. I think you say we only give them to these people, you know, they'd have to come back and.
The more we're talking though tonight, the more I feel like we're slowly pulling the bandit off. And I think that there's some value also in going. And having, I mean, so, I mean, the discussion is good, but I think we're starting to get really nitpicky and really into it. And I, it's good to have this discussion, but I'm not sure if that's gonna be the best way to move forward.
I start to wonder versus defining a bunch of rules. Let's let everybody apply voluntary transfer. Let's see what the numbers are.
Yeah, I'm not as comfortable with that, because there's some people I think particularly deserving, shouldn't that go through the lottery, shouldn't be subject to capacity?
Yeah, but you did let them finish.
I'm sorry.
So let's see the numbers, and let's see if we can live with those numbers. And if we can live with them all, then we're done.
I might still wanna range. I got a little nervous about that.
There's a process, so here, so here's the deal, you have to find a process. I guess when I'm, maybe there's an exception at some point, right? So let's just let everybody apply, wants to apply. So if it ends up ninety-six percent in the first year of the transition, can we just let that ride? Let's get out of the, you know what I mean?
In order to.
If we came to a livable solution, so let everybody who wants to apply apply. Let's see what the data says. Can we accommodate that or not, period? And as long as it's heading in the right direction.
I agree with that, and if I can go back to something that Phil said earlier, because I wrote this down, I just haven't had a chance to insert it in here. But it's something that you might wanna consider. Now, at the elementary level, one of the reasons that we have the annual reapplication is that's a seven-year stint that kids are in the school, right? And there's only one capstone here at the end. At the high school, they're in there for four years, but there's a two-year capstone rule. So one of the things that might address one of the challenges that Phil brought up is to say that if you come in as a freshman, you graduate as a senior.
Somebody.
I like.
Somebody brought that idea.
All right?
But it's just you gotta be looking ahead when you let them in.
Right.
Right, that's fair.
We can do that. But that way, because otherwise they do the, they do the voluntary transfer year one, they take the gamble year two. But if they made it here two, then they're in for three and four.
Right.
So maybe there's a way to get.
I think, I think locking them in only makes sense.
But that's actually the issue I wanna talk about. Because specifically with respect to Liberty, freshman in twenty seventeen, you might look at twenty seventeen and say, hey, we got room for you. But you know that two years later, there's not gonna be room for them.
Yeah, Matt and I had a little sideline discussion about that when we were trying to figure out where that lottery lay. And that was one of the questions that we had was, we will have to say how many kids can occupy those seats until that addition gets built. And then we would have to take that into consideration when we made those kinds of choices.
But I mean, it seems to me that you could, I mean, basically, as things stand, you really couldn't let freshmen and sophomores into Liberty in two thousand seventeen as, as voluntary transfers. Because you know two thousand nineteen, they're still gonna be there and we don't have the capacity.
Well, that was gonna be my follow-up question if that's the direction you're going, so who can't apply? So who are we saying can't apply for voluntary transfer? You just said everybody, assuming Liberty freshmen and sophomores would be people that can't apply for a voluntary transfer. Because that's the group we've told, they're going to Liberty, right?
If it were me, I would write that policy to say, anybody can apply for these things. Administrators will use their gun and data to decide whether there's likely to be, to keep them there for as long as they wanna stay there. And if there isn't.
I think Matt's question is, the people that we have told to go to Liberty the first year.
Oh, right, right.
Freshman, sophomore, they couldn't transfer back out.
Oh, and I think they're gonna have to not.
They're gonna be the, one exclusion to what you, they would be the exclusion to what you just talked about, right?
Because we have somebody in.
Right.
Yeah.
And then we might go back to. We might go back to the observation Phil made earlier though, it's the difference between ideal capacity and maximum capacity. And so, we could use that as we were looking at it and saying, okay, we know that there's an addition coming in. We know when that'll be here, and that might help us decide how many seats we would be willing to open up at Liberty. Same thing with City High, we know there's an addition coming in there, we know it's gonna be fifteen ninety-three. At what point in time do you say, okay, we're gonna build up to ideal capacity? Maybe go over a little towards max capacity, knowing that the next year we're gonna go way down because we're gonna have the addition in there. So we could look at that too.
Yeah, because that floor is even different, right? Depending on what you're considering capacity. You know, if it was eighty-five percent in West today, then that was ten at the lottery's point versus the.
And then really, it won't be a West issue, it'll be a Liberty City issue for us, because we'll be looking at those additions coming in there and the extra seats that are in there.
Yeah, although again, sort of twenty seventeen, that wouldn't work at Liberty, because not with us, kids would still be there with the addition of us. But later that makes sense.
So I just wanna clarify, so you're saying that junior freshmen and sophomores that are, that live in the Liberty zone, even if they've got a sibling going to West and it's gonna be hardship on the family, they still have to go to Liberty?
That's why I, that's why I'm asking you. I mean, we've, we've told those families, right, that if you have a freshman or sophomore, they're gonna be the one zoned to Liberty and they have to go. There wouldn't be a voluntary transfer option for them. So those would be the only ones we'd be considering that you wouldn't be.
Unless there was a hardship, safety, security, health.
Right.
Yep, yes.
Hardship as defined by our.
Open and rolling.
Said here in that process, right? Yeah, the open and rolling definition.
Because there is a few, I think, that may involve an healthcare.
Sure.
There's mine. So I'm thinking, is everybody aligned to opening up voluntary transfer?
I'm aligned with opening it, I'm concerned about capping.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. I think that's what.
I, I mean, I see, and I personally think, you know, Brian talks about the Band-Aid pulling off slowly. I think some of this is gonna, I mean, we have some growing pains that this is gonna work itself out. I mean, if we just can get through the next five years, none of these situations are gonna apply anymore. Because everybody's siblings will have gone through and, you know, I mean, this is a short-term. This is a short-term situation.
Let's get her opened up.
You weren't doing drum circle, but I was feeling a little something.
What would people think about when you open them up having certain preferences that people could have? I'm thinking like in elementary school, you do have to reapply every year, right? But to me, the kid who's already there on voluntary transfer, if he has to reapply the following year and there's a lottery, I mean, that, that kid should get preference over some kid who's not already volunteered.
Except remember, that's part of our, we, we put this in place because we want people. We actually want people to go to West.
We wouldn't deal with that at the high school level, because remember our.
I know, it doesn't really happen here.
Yeah, our idea would be that once in, they're there. And it's not an issue at the junior high level because one's in the capstone the second year.
But the other one would be siblings. So after that first year, like I really hated, she was not to go to Liberty. What if the second year, someone wants to transfer to West, but for some reason there is, you know, not enough seats for everybody? Can we give preference to people who have a sibling argument?
See, I don't know, you get into facility different roles and scenarios.
You may as well, as super majority.
Right.
Right.
General practice.
Case by case administrative. I mean, it's not like they can come back. I know, but it's not like they can come back later. It's just overwhelming and make adjustments to.
How about this?
I'm just saying, like, if, if we come to a pretty good consensus about this, okay, but knowing also in our minds that these other small tweaks need to happen. I guess when I'm thinking about making these things, is I always believe in adjustments, that we have to adjust to our community and their needs. And, and right now, we can't. I'm not a weather forecaster, I don't know that far out about this family's certain situation. But at some point, we need to depend on our administrators to do a case by case. And if they have to be brought back to the board table because it's just an overwhelming response about that certain situation, then let's make adjustments to that. But we don't know what that is right now, we can just hear and speculate all night, that's what I'm saying. I don't know if that makes sense, but.
Just going back to Matt's question about who's excluded. And we, we could talk about that, the Lincoln and Alexander kids at City. Are they excluded from applying for voluntary transfers in the first year of these family changes? Go to state where they basically are. The way that West students are excluded. You know, because we have to basically do it with West students to fill Liberty, we don't really have to do it to them. And they're not moving without their high school.
Well, that's why I did my record, because I think that hardship is pretty clear, right? That, that hardship.
So you're really looking at, and again, back to that idea about, you know, majority versus the exception. The exception really in that case is the, is the kids in North Lincoln.
Maybe Hills.
Well, but, but Hills, but Hills isn't a mandated unable to apply, right? Because they're not Liberty eighth, ninth, tenth graders, and so therefore, they could apply for a voluntary transfer. See, that's, that's, there was where I was pushing the secondary team, is try not to have any exceptions. Try to have the exceptions subdued under the voluntary transfer rule. So that the only ones that can't apply for a voluntary transfer in this case are the ninth, tenth graders at Liberty next year. Now, in that group, the only subgroup that I see that's really part of the hardship group is the, uh, the North Lincoln kids. Because even the Van Allen kids that you described, they're zoned West. So they could.
That's a different issue.
But they could voluntarily transfer in to Liberty.
I'm just gonna say there's a cap.
Might not be capacity, you know?
Right. There's some. Right, so that's why I said, you know, we might have to look at those percentages there, but the rule would allow them to do it. The only ones who wouldn't be allowed to do it would be the North Lincoln kids.
But wouldn't the rule prohibit Alexander kids from transferring out of their newly assigned school, West High, during the first year of that new assignment?
No.
I think really the, the new school.
Only with a brand new school.
Only a new attendance area.
Oh, okay.
So that's why I said the only group that's in that can't even fill out the paperwork group are ninth and tenth graders at Liberty next year. And in that group, the only subgroup that maybe hits your criteria are the North Lincoln kids.
I think you're right.
So in that case, you know, back to your point, Latasha, we can deal with those kids on a one-off basis and not necessarily have to write a rule for them in that standpoint.
And so we would say siblings, having two kids at different schools doesn't apply as a hardship? as a hardship?
Not for the ninth, tenth graders, then you'd actually go to Brian's rule, which says you can bring your older siblings with you, or you can be split if you're a ninth, tenth.
And we were pretty clear about that, I think, last fall, when people asked that question about how that would be treated, and we said that that could happen, you can, the older one could go to Liberty, but the younger one wouldn't be able to stay at West to promise all that, so.
All right, you want to write it up first?
We'll give that a shot. I got a lot of notes over here.
Why are you keeping them simple, right?
I think so.
Well, I think it's pretty simple. I think, though, the point you started, though, with Chris, was, you know, open it up, but then see where we're at, and so build in those checkpoints, because I know that's what the, you know, the intent of bringing this rec out to you was, you know, to prevent large shifts. So I think if we're gonna, if we're gonna open it up, and that's the direction you're moving, then, you know, what are our checkpoints to look at that? So after that, we processed this first round, and to say, did this go a direction we didn't like, and are we gonna have to look at a different policy for next year, but...
And it's a huge option for us, too, to have that December first date in there. Because if something completely unforeseen blows up, we can still come back to you and say, we got a problem.
Right. I think if you had your ranges, I don't want to overuse aspirational, but if you had them as a long-term kind of goalposts, like, are we going to exit anybody before you're free? Probably not, you know what I mean? And we may have to transition for that.
We could put a combination in, a numbers and percentages.
You guys think about it.
I guess I would still go further a little bit on some things, and I would say, for example, North Lincoln kids who have already transferred to Southeast at some point, you would get a transfer. Not just you can apply for a transfer, but you would get one.
Well, I think, well, they gotta apply. They gotta apply.
Well, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
If you just say they can apply, they're competing with everybody else who's applying.
Like I said, we know that that's the single small subset that's different, you know, the old Sesame Street, which one of these doesn't look like the other, that's the only one. So that allows us to write an exception rule for that group.
Van Allen, too, though, I would say, you will be able to go, if you're within that little window of time, you will be able to go there to Liberty, even if other people are being told there's no room at Liberty for transfers. That's what I would do.
Because if they're a sixth grader this year, then next year, they're going to be split from everyone they've ever gone to school with.
And it's a tie.
And their attendance zone has not changed till 2019, so. And it is a very small, and it's like four or five kids.
Most of them, I'm happy just to say, you can apply for transfer to Liberty. But those, I would think, well.
I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you for helping us think through that.
So where did we end on the parameters? I heard you say you still want parameters.
I like the idea of having them in there because it gives us some upper and lower bounds, but I'm definitely over to going back, first of all, pulling the numbers and looking at them to see what they look like, and then perhaps looking at adjusting them, but I want to have some conversation with the secondary administrators.
They get a common definition of the capacity and then...
They're all on the other side, right?
Yeah.
Can I ask something? I know we've been focusing very much on the secondary.
Yes.
But since the topic is voluntary transfer process, can I ask one other question? I'm sorry to do this to Taylor. No, I can't, all right.
Oh.
So I'm just curious, where, where my, where boundaries are shifting at the elementary level in 2019, especially where there's areas of current overcrowding, would it be possible for elementary families to jump early, especially, I mean, you understand what I'm saying? Like, if somebody, if somebody was, let's say Garner, which is Rocket, and they were, we haven't really, we haven't been really specific in this, so I'm just using this as a totally hypothetical.
Haven't said anything.
We haven't done anything with this, we left that on hold. If, say, some of the name, some of the area between Garner and Valen or Van Allen, or if you go to Van Allen instead of Garner, would we allow people to jump early before 2019?
Yeah, and we actually have done that in the past.
Especially if they had younger sibs that were going to go to...
That's not been a problem, because they're usually jumping from where it's overcrowded to where it's not.
Correct.
And so that hasn't been a big issue for us. It's occasionally been an issue where there's a grade level that's been on the edge, but they usually also apply early enough that we've been able to look at that and say, okay, we can take that into consideration when we do our staff.
But let's, let's take crowding out of it. Let's say that there's a neighborhood that we have defined for 2019, that is currently going to one school, is going to be going to another school.
Yep.
Can they jump early? Or could they, could they, if there was space at the receiving school?
Yes.
They could...
Yes, they can, and we've had that. We've had that. And actually, that's why you have some of these Lincoln parents that are coming to you now, because when we initially passed it, they said, we're in, burned all the green stuff in the backyard, bought all red stuff, we're ready to go. So Matt's, those are the ones that are calling you and saying, hey, time out here, now I gotta burn the red stuff, buy football stuff? And so, yes, we have had those people that have said, we know what you're asking us to do, and we are willing to do it today because we think it's better for our kids to get in there and get it started now.
And I just wanted to...
And we've accommodated them.
Could've been talked about here, I'm just talking about down here.
I have another question, sorry. Are there a lot of kids that are freshmen and sophomores that do not want to go to Liberty, that live in the Liberty zone? Because I know that there's kids that do want to go to Liberty, that don't live in the Liberty zone, but are there a lot that don't want to go?
I don't think we've had that sentiment, but I think we've also been pretty clear about saying, you're zoned to go to Liberty, you're going. And we've been clear about our answer about if you have a sibling that's older, that no, it's not going to be an option for you to stay, so I don't think, I mean, that voice hasn't been loud. I'm sure there's probably some, something out there that, you know, some people, you know, may be of that opinion where they'd rather stay at West for whatever reason, but I, I think it's probably to do with the fact we've been pretty clear about what that process is going to look like.
And I think part of it, too, has been the bridge work, you know, whether it's the girls volleyball team or some of those other things that are going on out there.
Well, my, my observation is that they're very excited about it.
Yeah.
And in fact, other kids want to go.
Yeah, they think they're starting to build an identity, and there's excitement behind that, and so I, at least, have not, I've not had those requests.
They wear their Liberty Lightning shirts to the West High football games.
They wear them a lot, at least when I'm over there.
All right. Chris, can you, can we just clarify for everyone? What we're doing with this going forward, so everybody, goes in the paper tomorrow, or when the Southeast student's family calls us, we know how to answer? Can we, I mean, is there... Well, I think we're allowed to open up voluntary transfer within some parameters, which we're going to further define.
Right.
And there will continue to be hardship transfers if people really have an health and safety security concern.
Yep, we'll continue to use, as we always have, we'll continue to use the open enrollment transfer guidelines as our, our open enrollment hardship guidelines for our voluntary transfer.
And I think what we said, when we get all the applications, we'll evaluate.
So we'll have some parameters established, but at the end of the day, we're going to tell people they can apply, and then we're going to look at those numbers and see where they shake out.
I don't know why you want to let people apply.
Yeah.
Which is not unlike we did at the elementary level. Amy knows we, we're pushing that back, you know, we've always done the middle-of-the-summer thing, but that's because we didn't do summer enrollment for kids, and now that we do summer enrollment for kids, we're talking about, okay, can we, can we push it back? Because parents want to know, am I going to get into school X or Y or Z at the elementary level? And so Amy and I talked this summer after going through it, that waiting until July, mid-July, to try to figure this out and tell parents is probably not good for kids and parents, and so can we push it up and do that a little bit earlier? So from that standpoint, it would be similar to this, they could apply, and then we'll look at the numbers and figure out where we're at.
So then you get just a double down, everyone's going to be able to apply, but that doesn't mean they're getting a transfer.
Because we'll look at that number in December, what happened there?
Except for the freshmen and sophomores.
Right. No, I just wanted to make sure.
Lincoln and North Lincoln.
We'll look at them individually.
Where it says Liberty High enrollment must be defined by September 30th, 2016, are you, are you saying that the voluntary transfer deadline will be earlier for them, or just the unique...
It's about...
Yeah. I think we need to know what was going to be the potential scenario, so we were actively reflecting to the state what was going to look like.
What we know is, yeah, we know the freshman sophomore count, and we know the junior-senior commits, so we've got that number, and that's the number that Matt and Scott need to work with the state on. And so our concern was if there was going to be any changes to boundaries, or there are going to be any changes to those rules, we needed to know that ASAP, because that would influence the number that we share with the state.
All right, we're ready to move on?
Yep.
I should've said this at the beginning, I need to leave it down, so.
All right. We'll be looking at Liberty as I do.
So weighted resource allocation model?
Yeah, and I'm not going to go through these, but I definitely encourage you to take a look at them. One of the things that we did, you've got the chart, and I apologize, because I'm not working on the most recent one, because we just got that from Lisa on Friday. But, so what we did with the weighted resource allocation model was, at the, in our six schools with students that need the greatest access to opportunity, we made sure that we looked to staff classrooms with full FTEs, so that it was a single classroom for both their homeroom and for literacy and math, and ensure that those students have the greatest support that they need in order to succeed. And so those are, there's six schools that we did that with, and we did that staffing first. Now, we did run into some challenges with that. I want to say three of the schools had space challenges. Lucas was one of them, they're going through a construction process. Hills had a little bit of a space challenge, Alexander did also, you know, we parked a couple of portables out there to help deal with that. Kirkwood was really the one that was the easiest for us to deal with because Anita had some extra space there. And so we moved some staff members in there, which gives us, if you remember the chart that I sent out, those numbers are greener, which means that they're lower class sizes. And so when you look at those six schools, K to six, they have our smallest class sizes. And that's in that lower aspirational range that you said. Then after we did that, we started looking at K two across the rest of the district, and our goal is to try to staff those with full FTEs also, so that those students had the benefit of the smaller class size, both in their homeroom and in their literacy and math section. As you got farther towards the end, so if you remember that chart on the second column down, or second row down, as you got to those schools that had a lower numbers of students that were either English language learners, students qualified for special education, or low socioeconomic status, then you see more point fives in there, which is why there are two columns next to each of those classrooms, because it'll tell you how big a homeroom is, so when they're taking science or social studies, how big is their classroom. But then, when you put that halftime person in there, how big are their classes when they go into literacy and math? Because we know where our board goals are, we know the keys that literacy and numeracy provide for kids in their advanced grade levels, and so we wanted to make sure that those class sizes in those classrooms were well under aspirational class sizes. And so you can see where, where we added those staff in order to make that happen. So we were pretty successful this year when we looked at it. Amy and I, as we did our autopsy work just about a week ago, there were probably four point five FTEs that if we would've had a crystal ball, we would've assigned differently. So when you think about the, the large number of elementary students that we had, two FTEs misplaced, if you will, but only misplaced because we put a halftime person in there when they were at twenty-five point eight, and the aspirational class size was twenty-six. So they weren't over it. Was it unneeded, not unneeded, but perhaps there are other spots that we could've placed that, that individual. Now, we solved most of the places where you could've placed that individual by putting FTEs in there, so one could argue that maybe we're, we've got it spread throughout the entire system. There's maybe two point oh FTE that we would not have placed in general in the system if we would've had the numbers back in March that we have today, once we're into the system. So it worked really well. I'll tell you that the placements were done earlier than they've ever been done before. And that's because we started in a better place at the beginning of the school year. I know you hear from parents, because they start to say, oh, my goodness, there's X number of kids. We still struggle with parents who move out of the district, not notifying the district that they moved out, and so we worked really hard to try to get our principals to get their classes 100% e-registered, and that is that the parent has actually gone into the system and confirmed, indeed, I am sending my children to you this fall. And so some of the schools struggle with that, to get those parents in there and get their kids e-registered, and that's actually really hard for us, because when we talk to the principals, and we're asking them, do you think Brian's kids are coming back? And he says, I'm not sure they are, but, but I'm still carrying them in the load. Well, that's what parents see and talk about, and, you know, I've heard that there's this number of kids in the classroom. When we have a, perhaps a better understanding of where we think they are, and we're trying to staff for that, and we're trying to make those decisions as quickly as we can, and yet at the same time, not overallocate too early. So it's always a little bit of a struggle for us, but again, this year, better than any year that I've been here before in terms of having those people out, in the buildings to start with, when they got there for the ice cream social, and then where we needed to make changes after the school year started, we had those all done within the first eight days of school, which again, is quicker than we've ever done before. And so I know I had a chance to talk to some parents at some of the events that they had later, and I had one of them who said, she was a frequent emailer to you, and she said, sorry, I know I should've waited, but when it's your kid, you know, you're the number one advocate, and I, you know, not a problem, we expect them to do that. And when you, when you think that the class is going to be that big, and you know the impact that has on your child, you know, you ask, and that's certainly understandable. She was really pleased that the literacy and math numbers are low, she thought, all right, the science and social could be a little bit higher. And that was, that example was, I think, the prevailing sentiment from what I heard from around the district this year. So it's worked really well. Appreciate you folks giving us the parameters to do that. It made Amy and Son higher, our jobs a lot easier. We do have, back to Brian's question, we do have people that want to voluntarily transfer, and, and they will look at class sizes in Building Eight and say, I should be able to transfer in there because in the building I'm in, the class sizes are here.
Right.
And we say, well, no, there's a different aspirational class size in that building than there is in your building. And so therefore, there isn't room at the end for you. But we had that ability to do that now. Amy and I are still dealing with the last one out there that still has that question, and it's, it's hard for them to understand when they look at it and say, their class sizes are smaller than mine, why can't I transfer in there? And we have to explain how the resource allocation model works. But it gives us very clear-cut rationale for making those decisions. So, Amy?
I, I guess I would say, in May, I was, I'm surprised at kind of where we're actually at now, thinking about whether we'd have to do kind of a soft landing towards this, but we're really close to those aspirational goals all across the district. You know, we really had to be mindful of, at that, that point in the year that we're at in May, we weren't going to be transferring staff across the district, and so in our low FRL buildings, we weren't able to take staff away and give to the high FRL, and it just happened to work itself out. I think the things that we were concerned for initially, like Steve alluded to around capacity, we were able to satisfy to a great extent with the portables, and we're in a really good spot. And Steve alluded to the fact that, you know, we had two to maybe four FTE that we were playing a little bit with, but when you talk about 351 sections, that's, that's pretty good to, to end up with that, so.
So I would, if you haven't had a chance to read the testimonials, I would definitely encourage you to do that. There's some kind of big-picture overviews that you get from the principals, but then there's some actual feedback from staff members, and I think it's pretty powerful. And I can tell you from being out in the classroom, and I'll use Alexander as an example. And I know it's the second year in the school, and I had that conversation with guidance counselor and the principal. And I, you know, they weren't going through that, if you think about the, you know, storming, forming, norming process there. You know, they weren't going through that piece of figuring out who their siblings were, and, you know, how things were, what were the rules of the house type of thing, because they've been there for a year. But Alexander is a great example. You go in the building, and there's enough room now for the teachers to have their carpets out there where the kids can come and gather, where there might not have been that room last year. They've got their desks grouped differently, where last year, they had to have them in rows. This year, they're able to put them in pods, and they've got kids working together collaboratively. Classes are quieter. There's, there's less noise in the hallway. As one of the teachers described to me, I can see the other end of my class as they're moving down the hall, or before, they get around the corner. So my choice was to either be at the front of the line or the back of the line, knowing that I wouldn't be able to see half the line when they're around the corner. And so the school just feels different. It, it really does. It feels a lot different. When you talk to the, the office staff about the number of kids that are being referred down there, the numbers are down drastically. And that's good for kids, because if kids are in the classroom and things are quiet, we know they're learning.
And I think about the impact all the way across, too. Just thinking about my own kids at Lucas and talking to the specialist teachers in music and PE teacher, and the impact that has even on them by having those extra classroom sections, and what that experience back in those special sections is like. So, you know, we talk about a lot of what that, you know, the time in front of that, that one teacher is, but it also has that far-reaching impact, adult things Steve's talking about in those special areas, too, so.
That's exactly what we expected and hoped for, right? So. I think it's not the silver bullet.
Nope.
Should it affect the climate and culture and?
And then, at the other end of the spectrum, the other, the other thing, and I'll get the new sheet out to you, so you can take a look at that. We were very mindful of trying to keep those students who are in those classrooms that have lower numbers of kids in those three demographic groups. We did not want their class sizes to balloon astronomically. We tried to keep them at the aspirational class size limit, and if not in their homerooms, certainly in their, their literacy and numeracy pieces, and I've been in those classrooms, too. Some of them are bigger than they have been in the past. And, and the teachers have been pretty candid with me about where the challenges lie in those larger classrooms. I will tell you, they've done a wonderful job accommodating them. And I, I see teaching and learning in there that mirrors what I saw last year. You know, as, as one of the teachers said, I want you to come back on a regular basis, because we're gonna need to continue to monitor this over the course of the year. And said, it feels okay now, but I'm not sure how it's gonna feel in October and November. So we're gonna get back out there and see what they have to say.
So we authorized the first year. We'd like to bring back the policy.
We do have policy governance before they were not meeting. Actually, has that policy drafted. And I think, I think we dropped it. I think from P and G, the recommendation was put on in October. So maybe the first board meeting in October, we'll add that back.
Yeah, there's one thing I was hoping to talk about tonight. We'll do it another time, maybe at that meeting. At the secondary level, still having a hard time getting my head around it. And the two things I'm worried about are, even if none of the high schools are above 40%, there still might be some good reasons to reallocate within the buildings, because some classrooms are a higher need and stuff are. And if one of them is over, you don't necessarily want to spread those additional resources evenly throughout the classroom.
That's a great point. We focused at the elementary level. Matt knows, because he and I have dealt with this, that when you talk to the secondary folks, there's some other issues that they have that go beyond those demographic categories that we look at. Safety and student learning stations are a big one. So we talked about science, and we've looked at those. We just looked at that at North Central this year. There's a challenge with having enough stations for kids in specific classes. Computer science, science, family consumer head. If there's only 28 sewing machines in there, can you put 30 kids in that classroom? And so that's a challenge at the secondary level. So we really have not mapped out implementation at the secondary level. I know that when P and G wrote the policy, they wrote the policy K to 12. We really focused on K6. We have not focused on 7.
Those part of the best numbers for 7, 8, 9, 11, 12 seem to be like, oh, that's the way it should work.
Yeah.
You know, you might have advanced classes where we only have kids with proficiency gap issues.
We'll be back to you as we go through and try to figure that out. We've talked about that. We're not sure what implementation looks like there. So that's gonna be a little bit more of a challenge for us. But elementary has been, has gone very well, very, very well.
And that was our focus. I mean, honestly, well, hopefully at the secondary level, we don't need it. And it was a little bit of motivation to stay balanced, correct? So. Any other, Steve?
Nope, I only got three minutes here. I think Steve's gonna pay attention to this one, because it's only three minutes left, maybe.
I think what I'm gonna do is jump to the bottom, and I can talk a little bit about the equity initiative, so that I finish on a high note.
Sure, I can talk about that. Yeah, quick. There are a couple of things, a couple of things will be coming in to your board packet next week in regards to three important initiatives. One is the implicit bias training that the group of parents have talked about wanting to discuss. And that training is the, the job embedded training that we talked about, that's gonna be a little more comprehensive. I mean, and more information will be sent out in the memo upcoming. And so that's kind of, again, that implicit bias training that we discussed over the summer and really kind of now being realized over the course of the year. The next piece is talking about restorative justice and, oh, about the implicit bias training. Also, we'll be working in har, in tandem with Harvard University and their rides program, and working with Sosu Stumbo, who's also in the back as well, and, and doing some of that wonderful collaboration with that group. So that was a key piece that I forgot. The other piece is restorative justice, and so working with a group out of the University of Illinois. It's called Conflict 180. It's actually a recommendation from, one of our teachers over at Southeast has seen some of the work that's being done. And so they're gonna be working in collaboration with our team from the university that's been doing some of the equity research from the public policy project to work on a district, or not a district, but a team, but a team of, from three of the schools. We're thinking right now of the junior highs, to go forward and do some of that restorative justice work and put forth a plan that, again, we'll keep you in the loop about. But do, what we can do to do a better job as far as reducing some of our suspensions and providing our teachers with tools from a restorative justice standpoint, specifically around circle groups or P circles, that can really help in the, the building, alleviate some of these things. And then last but not least, there's something else that is totally blanking on my mind right now. Something I wrote in CAS. It was avid. Oh, avid is just, I mean, I think the other thing was the CAS was avid. Avid's going well. Thankfully, you heard some of the information from some of the individuals that were there, so that was good. I know that I talked to you about sending you the gold plant, the plant, but I haven't finished it yet. So that's another reason why. It's just taking some time.
Heard great things, so.
But things are, things are going well. We're moving forward. I'll shoot here a report back from the IOT that met today as far as, you know, what's happening actually in the classrooms regarding that. But it's just overall, from a culture standpoint, people being excited about it, it's been really good. And the parent engagement, as you heard, was obviously phenomenal.
That's awesome. I'm just gonna jump onto one thing you talked about there with avid. We had a meeting here about a week or two ago to really address course-taking in our secondary building. So I think you're gonna hear us continue to talk some more about that and bring you some information in that regard, too. So we know avid has a skill-based approach and talks about some wraparound support for kids. But then also, there's some things that informally we've been doing to try to inspire college-level course-taking for our students. And I think we're looking to try to formalize that approach, too. So we'll be updating you more with that as that comes.
Awesome, great. All right, thanks. Entertained by Mr. Durk. We did hit to your parent choice memo, so I'm just gonna get Sarah for you to look at. We can pick that one up.
Oh, but I literally destroyed my emails now.
Good for you. That's good.
I mean, it was good.
Awesome. Thanks, Chris.